Good evening. We're gonna call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. If you will rise, Dr. Taylor will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is accepted. Thank you. At this time, we will open the floor for patron comments. And do I need to read it or not? And no one has signed up. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak? No? Alright. We will move on. That will take us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Welli?
Thank you. Couple of highlights this month. First of all, we're starting a new two-year personalized learning program for educators called Valley Learning Pathways. This is in line with our five-year CSIP plan, providing personalized student learning experience and high-quality training or professional learning, and to expand leadership opportunities in our school and district for our teachers. The first step in this two-year plan is for educators to pick a focus area, to develop their teaching craft during district PD days. Educators are gonna work in groups to research their chosen area of focus, improve their practice, and assess and reflect on their impact from a lead learner in the cohort. So we're really excited to be launching this, beginning for the fall. Next up is our character education implementation. We've just come off of a year where every building had, was piloting something, and now we've got common resources. So all K-5 is using the same resource, and our middle schools and our high school are using the same resources, those three schools. So we're planning for the professional development for that, and it will include common expectations for implementation, a pacing guide to help the teachers out, and a process for feedback throughout the year, so we can evaluate that. And that is also one of our, that was one of our goals in our five-year plan. And I also wanted to circle back with you on our Get the Lead Out campaign, where we went through and had independent testing of water fixtures in all of our schools, consistent with Missouri legislation, really a statewide effort to make sure that we don't have lead poisoning in our schools. And the initial testing picked up 12 sources in the, throughout our schools that had some type of issue. And so our operations team went through and replaced the fixtures, like the touchpoint fixtures, and that, and then they were retested. And that did the trick for 11 out of the 12. And the last one, they're gonna go in and this summer replace. So this is an update that I hadn't, we just got in this week, so you're hearing this for the first time. We're gonna go in on that 12th fixture and replace the shut-off valves underneath the sink. It's a rarely-used sink. So the shut-off valves, and then that'll get retested yet this summer before school starts. So if that fails, then one of the options will be just to remove that rarely-used sink, cap off the water lines, and give some sort of indicator there at the source, so that a few years from now, somebody doesn't get the idea that, oh, there's a water source here, we should put in a, should put in a new sink. So we would have that identified. That's just one of the options. But we're confident that it'll be the shut-off valves. They think maybe the lead solder in the, in the shut-off valves. And then I want to draw your attention to, you have a calendar of events down below, and I literally highlighted a couple of things. On July 31st, we're bringing in our new teachers for some initial, initial welcome here at the Leadership Center at 8 o'clock on that day. And board members, you are certainly invited to attend. And we'll, we'll text you as it gets closer, because we'd kinda like to know whether or not that's gonna work out on your calendars, but do check that. Also, on August 16th, we'll have our back-to-school convocation. It's our pep rally to kick off the year, and we'll have all of our people at the Jerry Mueller Performing Arts Center that morning. We'll get the, we'll get the actual event started at 8:30, and board members are certainly invited to attend that as well. And also, wanted to have you get on your calendar. MSBA's annual conference is in Kansas City again this year, but it is a little sooner than it has been the last couple of years. So this year, it'll be for October 24th and 25th. Also, so we take questions on any of those highlights, anything else in the superintendent's report. And we also have included a monthly financial summary, and this is year-to-date on, up to May. And then also included in reports tonight is the minutes from the last facilities planning committee meeting, which was held on June 4th. That included some updates on our architects' work to do some assessments on kind of the north part of the district. And then when we're done answering any questions on any of that, we also have this month's MSBA video report.
Thank you. Any members have any questions on the reports? I was just looking at a couple of them. On the financial side, as far as some of the revenues that have come in over the projected budget numbers, I also see that there are a few items of expenses that have also come in over budget, which is expected. But can you elaborate on, like, the assessed railroad and utility? That was one that I was looking at. What would have caused that?
On the county revenue side?
Yeah.
Yeah, it came in over, I don't know if Mr. Hoop, Mr. Hooper joins us tonight. The thing is, it is 119% of the, of the budget. But I don't know that we know. We just project that based on our trends and our history.
Yeah, there's not really, I don't really know exactly, I think it's on, but I don't know, sorry.
Thank you.
It's one of those things, we're usually booking it off of actuals, or kind of watching it. And I honestly, I cannot remember if this one, there was one that Dr. Gush and I were looking at, and it kind of went up and down every year, so we kind of picked the middle point of it, and that's where we kind of landed on this year. So it's one of those things where we just kind of look at every year and reassess what it needs to be, based off of actuals.
Okay.
It'd be nice if it trended that way.
Yeah, the other one was the early childhood, as far as what would have made that one go up, like it did, 300,000, 370,000?
So it's the same type of logic on this, is that it's based off of prior-year expenditures. And so we don't really know what that is by the time we're budgeting for the next year. And so we just, again, go back on actuals for the current year, and we figure it's gonna be at least that, and we bump it up a little bit. But it could be like, there was one of them this year, it actually, we estimated too much. And it was, again, based it off of actuals, and it just kind of fluctuates with expense expenditures.
And in other parts of the budget, we had, we had federal monies that was a few hundred thousand dollars less, because it's gonna be a delayed payment after the, after July 1st. So there, sometimes it's, sometimes it's timing as well, but on those two cases, we just know what we know.
To that point, so as, as far as revenues and expenses, the year-end for the district is June 30th, yes? So this is pretty close to what we'll end up?
There's a, there's still another state payment, so there's still about, there's still probably close to 3 million in state revenues that came in. Maybe it was two, maybe 2 million in state revenues that came in. And then we have county tax. The county kind of, not the county tax, sorry, the property taxes, they kind of shocked us the last, like, every other week, they've been hitting us with some protested that we've been getting. So like, last week, I had anticipated, when we sent your packet out last week, I'd anticipated like 20,000 a week for the next two weeks, and we got 115,000 dollars of protested taxes. And we still have, at one point, a couple of months ago, they sent out a, a letter saying that we had like 530-some thousand dollars in protest of taxes. I think we've received about 230, 40,000 of that. So like this week, honestly, today, I opened up the email saying, ooh, are we gonna get more? But it was just normal payments, so.
So how will that work for, as far as finalizing the numbers, if another, whatever that is, 300,000 that's left out there, or 500, whatever that number is, comes through? Will that go, if it's past July 1, will it go into next year's budget, or will it revert back to this budget?
Correct. We, we, as of right now, we've received everything.
Okay.
So we've received, you know, they're not reflected in these numbers, but we have received all revenues as of right now.
Okay.
And did you have a question on, anything on the expenditure side?
I think that's it. Thank you. Alright, that will take us to
And we have the MSBA.
The MSBA report.
Welcome to the June edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the legislative session that wrapped up last month. Education issues dominated headlines and talking points throughout this year's session. MSBA's Director of Outreach, Caitlin Whaley, says that this year's session was unusual from start to finish.
The, the 2024 legislative session was a bit odd, I think, to kind of sum it up. We started off with a lot of, a lot of bills. A historic number of bills filed, thousands of bills. And both in the education realm and just overall, it became clear semi-early on that the number of bills actually passed was gonna be very few. So specific to education, you saw that narrow down to Senate Bill 727 extremely quickly. And that became almost the entire focus of all the major education groups, was what was and was not in 727. And overall, just very few bills passed. I think, including the budget, it was like 49 bills, which is exceptionally low when you're starting from 5,000.
Caitlin says that with the passage of Senate Bill 727, there are now more issues that school board members will need to be aware of going into the next budget year and legislative session.
And we will be continuing to put out both policy and general guidance on what 727 means in practice and practicality. A lot of what is in 727 is budget-related, and so that is going to be a fight for next year, is to fight that you need to fund all of these additional mandates that we've put on school districts, the, the teacher salary increases, and you can't fund them at the expensive things like the foundation formula and transportation. We have to have that overall net increase in funding to keep it from being a huge local tax increase on our school districts.
And although the session is over, Caitlin says it's still important for board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators, and also noted the outstanding outreach efforts of school board members this past session.
I'm, I'm new to MSBA, but I was absolutely floored by the outpouring of support and enthusiasm for advocating on these issues. We had so many board members and districts step up and voice their opinions and concerns, do, you know, do that outreach that we were asking of them, because I know Brant will say it, and I will say it, and Mike will say it. Legislators want to hear from people in their districts, and it's much more meaningful for them to have a conversation with somebody that lives in their area and represents their local school districts than it is for, you know, the MSBA advocacy team in Jefferson City. So your work was absolutely noticed. We got feedback from the governor's office, that they were very impressed by the amount of outreach that they received. And so every time we conduct that outreach, we're laying groundwork that school board members are a trusted voice and a trusted advocate in public education, and we can continue to build that up as a resource going forward.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the delegate assembly that will be meeting this coming October. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the advocacy committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The advocacy committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the delegate assembly that determines MSBA's positions on these issues. Make your plans now to attend the 2024 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials. The event will once again feature some outstanding general session speakers, along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website soon. And past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the 2024 Paul Morris Community Service Award. The award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to local community service. Nominations will be accepted through June 28th, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in July for the next MSBA Board Report.
Alright, thank you. As far as that, with the upcoming MSBA conference, when they put that out, you'll bring it in front of the board for that signup? Thank you.
Yep.
Alright. That will take us to unfinished business. We will look to approve the 2425 budget. I would look for a motion to approve the budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Alright. Is there any discussion about the budget?
Yeah, this, this budget is nearly similar, nearly the same as what you saw three weeks ago at the workshop. It is a net increase expenditure of 448 dollars. And that was going, going back into some of the subcategories and taking another look. So we followed up some questions and feedback from the workshop, and the net change was 448 dollars.
Alright. With that, we will take that to a vote for approval. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that action passes. Next item on the agenda would be approve the administrative salary schedule. I'd look for a motion to approve the administrative salary schedule as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
I will point out that the board had previously approved this with the other salary schedules. And then we realized as, that the actual version that we put before the board had an error on three of the columns that was different than what we were budgeting, and different than what we were communicating to, to our people, and really different from what we had intended. So, so this one reflects changes to network administrator, which is also power school administrator, assistant director of transportation, and assistant finance director.
Thank you. All in favor of passing the administrative salary schedule, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. That will take us to new business, the budget transfer for 2324 year. I would look for a motion to approve the 2324 budget transfer as presented.
So moved.
Alright, thank you. Any discussion on this item?
There's two parts that are included in this transfer. The larger of the two is calculated by DESI. It's 7% times our state adequacy target, times the prior year's weighted ADA. That is 1.86 million dollars. And then the lesser part is our transportation fund transfer. That is also a calculation that DESI does for us, and that is to the tune of 534,000 dollars. Collectively, this helps cover our costs for capital projects for the year, for the year ending. So this is not a, this is not necessarily, from a budgetary standpoint, a surplus. This, this is just a way that, at the end of each budget year, we technically pay for our capital projects.
Correct, yep. Just so everybody understands that, that for all of our capital improvements, that's the only way that that fund gets funded, is through these transfers.
That is correct.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Alright. All in favor of approving the budget transfer as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That will take us to the budget amendment for 2324. Look for a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item?
I'll point out a couple of highlights. First of all, just from a procedural standpoint, this is our year-end, our budget year-end amendment. It's the third amendment of the year. We did one in October, we did another one in the winter. And this one kind of just wraps up with our actuals. And on the revenue side, the, the biggest change that's happened since the previous amendment is 10 million dollars increase due to the sale of premium bonds in interest from the 2024 bond. And the, the two largest expenditures that are represented here is an increase due to the 2023 bond expenses for the project that we're doing at the high school, and the increase due to, of 1.3 million dollars due to additional health insurance payments. The first one was 4 million. I don't know what came out of my mouth on that, if I, but my head tells me maybe I said it wrong. 4 million dollars for bond expenses, 1.3 million for health insurance payment, overage payments. And so the, the amended operating revenue is 59.5 million dollars, and the amended operating expenses is 59.7 million dollars.
Alright, thank you. I will look for, oh, sorry. I did that, yes. Alright, all in favor of approving the budget amendment as presented, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. The school board meeting calendar for 2425, if you
Yeah, we want to take an initial look at this and just kind of gauge, gauge reaction. We don't have to be in a huge hurry to, to get approval, but we thought this is probably the time of year to start looking ahead. So what we started with was the planned calendar for the year ending, and then we went in and made a couple of suggestions. First off, this last year, we met the first week in January on a Thursday night. But for the upcoming year, that first Thursday would be January 2nd. Probably not the most practical evening to meet in January. And the other thing I would say about that meeting that is, you know, for the previous year, we were working towards a ballot measure for, for a levy. So that was the time of year. It was really important that the board meet pretty often to continue to make sure that we were, we were vetting that. Typically, we, we wouldn't need to come directly off a break in order to do that. So that's one, that's one area. Another one, though, would be in May, we could, May is kind of a busy time of year. And although there are two graduation ceremonies in May, we could have a workshop in May. I think we actually had a special meeting, we actually met twice in May this spring. So we could do that. Another option would be, because in April, we meet back-to-back two weeks in a row, we, we could move the April 17th meeting to April 24th, so that between April and May, you meet on April 10th, two weeks later on April 24th, and then you meet on May 15th. So you're meeting three times between those two months, but they're more evenly spread out. So those are, those are kind of our initial thoughts, but we really, like I said, wanted to get this in front of the board and see how the board felt about how, how we've been managing the meeting schedule.
Alright, any thoughts to the schedule, Aaron?
Just that the, according to this, you have the annual conference, the MSBA conference is October 24th and 25th, and not on that particular page, at least how you wrote it in your, in the superintendent report.
Is it on this calendar?
Yeah, it's October 17th up top.
So I didn't know if that
Oh, thank you.
I don't know if we want to consider if we do go to that. That would be a fairly busy month, but it's whatever.
Yeah, so in the past, it's, the conference has fallen on the November school board meeting, so we've always canceled it. So I think it's best to probably keep it unless anybody objects. I mean, as it gets closer, if, if there's business that needs to be handled, we'll be able to handle it. If not, we could postpone it or cancel that meeting in the future. I think for the time being, let's just leave it on there.
Again, there's an error somewhere, because I've reported, I've reported that conference two different dates tonight. So some, one of them is wrong, and maybe it's, maybe it is wrong on the calendar, and we can, we can meet twice in October and have a conference.
I'm gonna make the same rant that I make every year, but I'm gonna keep it short. I don't want to meet just to meet, and I don't want to have two business meetings every month. We just simply, we don't need that. So if we're gonna have a workshop, it needs to be workshop items, things that we need to chew on, discuss ahead of a vote the following meeting. But I, I don't want to meet just to approve budget items and business when, when frankly, we only need to do that once a month. So if we're gonna meet this many times, you know, we'll do what we have to do, but I don't want to meet just for the sake of meeting.
So that is, that brings up a good point, and something that Dr. Welli and I have been talking back and forth about. And we've been working towards putting something together as far as for the business meetings for those first, first Thursday meetings, which would be, just as you're saying, if we would dispense with all of the standard agenda items that are on a board meeting or on a business meeting night, and just go straight into whatever the meat is that we're gonna work on, policies or whatever that is. If there are one-offs that we need to go ahead and do some approvals or something that's urgent, we could go ahead and do that. But what I had been working towards with Dr. Welli is actually moving everybody, from the board standpoint, away from the dais, down on the floor. Get them, get the stuff out in front of us, and let's work through these policies and the, the meat that we need to work through, and have it ready to bring back to a business meeting setting. So I think, moving forward in the next month or so, I'd, I'd look to that as probably our standard moving forward. So to your other comment about the April dates, does anybody have any thoughts one way or another towards those meetings?
I know that's a busy time of year, and with us going to the two
I know that's a busy time of year and with us going to the two graduations and stuff like that, that's hard. It's also, it's dependent upon the election in April as well, like I know that we. So then that can be really quick and things come up like, so yeah. My only. So I don't, so it says we could add this to the workshop in May, which so is the Thursday, the May fifteenth, the Sny Valley graduation?
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah.
So I do know as of today, well, April tenth, I will be out of town. I won't be here. But I think we have to hold that meeting no matter what that day. Isn't there a statute that we have or up against?
We're. I think there is a statute. But we could, we could stretch it. We're, I think we're, I don't know if we can wait another week, but. We could do like a Tuesday night or something if we needed to, we would just, we'd want to work, probably put that, work that out ahead of time so everybody could protect it.
Okay. And then. The April seventeenth date. Or do we want to go ahead and push to? April twenty fourth. And then meet again on that May date.
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth.
Mr. Porter, wouldn't that be the swearing in, the April tenth?
And that's what, yeah, we would have to potentially shift it to a Tuesday and do a special meeting. After that. Assuming I'm still on the board that day.
I would be for the pushing back to the twenty fourth, not doing the seventeenth and then eliminating the May first. Meeting. It is a busy time. I think that would be a wise way to go personally.
Okay, all right, we'll make that adjustment.
We'll bring it back next time and let you put eyes on it, see what you think.
Mr. Porter, I just had one other thought for May. On that May fifteenth date, we struggled a little bit for space at the high school with recognitions. We have a ton typically in May. I, if the board's interested, we could potentially host the meeting here and then travel to the high school for the graduation. It just might require like a different start time, maybe a five thirty start time or something, but I was just going to throw that out. We, we were pretty cramped this May.
Okay. I, I would be, I mean, it's right down the road. I'm, I would most definitely be in favor of making sure that we have the room, the space. So let's just make that change. We'll just plan on doing the meeting here and then we'll. At a five thirty start time.
Sounds good.
All right, any other comments? Thank you. All right. That will take us to board policies. These will all be action items tonight. We can. If there's no comments about the board policies, we can take action on them all as one unit. Does anybody have? Oppose, looking at them as one? No, all right. So I would look for a motion to approve the following board policies as presented. Policy BBD Board Member Removal From Office. Policy GCBDA Professional Staff Short Term Leaves. Policy GDBDA Support Staff Leaves. Policy EHBD Artificial Intelligence Use. Policy JHCD Administration Medications To Students. Second. All right, any discussion?
Mr. Scully, just one question. You had mentioned something earlier. About maybe a potential change in the medication, medical. Administering, was that this policy?
Yeah. If you guys go under page two on the emergency medications. I just wanted it clarified for purposes of my medical background, but I had epinephrine stated as to. It, how is it given? Same thing with naloxone and then. Just that it was clear and concise for pretty much CYA for this school.
So just the darker or neon green or is the, are the additional changes that we made?
Also with naloxone nasal and epinephrine that it's just that it's an auto injector because those are typical medicines. That you can give multiple different ways in a hospital setting or emergency setting. So I wanted it to be specific for the district.
Thank you.
And our, our team understands that if either the specific named medication or the specific way that it's administered changes. We're going to have to come back and modify policy.
Any other discussion or comments? All right. All in favor of approving the policies as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all policies are approved. Thank you. That takes us to the end of our agenda. I would look for a motion to adjourn for this evening.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks everybody for coming.